Twenty-five, twenty minutes. The reset's on.
With objections? I make a motion to accept the minutes from June thirteenth, June seventh, and June twenty-first.
A second.
We have bills.
Bills, yeah, big bills now. I already paid them.
That was nice, yeah.
No, you didn't.
Oxarc was chemicals for us, for my sort.
Does it say what the chemicals are?
No, it just says Oxarc.
How much is even on?
Four thirty-one.
Yeah, it was. It was that something thing.
Oh, the now?
Yeah.
Oh, weird something.
Yeah.
And what is prestige worldwide?
That's what you were talking about last month, and I didn't get the bill in time, so it's the ones who came and fixed our house first.
Oh.
Oh. Anybody else have any questions? I move to approve the tables.
Okay, so here we are, the next year for the splash pad. So, we made a lot of headway. I did a spaghetti dinner, primary dinner for Valentine's, duck race, concession stand for the baseball high school and softball high school, and the Bay group. And the total we raised was, I love saying these, eight thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. But Phil's food donated the vegetables like lettuce, tomato, and onions for the concession stand. But I charged it under the city, but I did put it under the splash pad expense. And then they are gonna send us a check, and that's gonna be ninety-two fifty-three. So our grand total so far is eight thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. I got a lot. I also talked to a friend of mine who minor name grant writing and is a professor of English at the WSU. And she was kind enough to come and help me do a fifty thousand dollar grant through T-Mobile. We will not know the outcome of that until September. The deadline was June thirtieth. We've got, we had to get some support letters. I got a support letter from Richard Grossclose, the mayor. I also got one for, from the Julieta Community Center. Christine from Seven Ridge's holistic health. And also from the Baseball Association. So if you guys wanna read those, you're welcome to or look at them. So I do have those four support letters. And then when the concession stand was done, we did have food left over, and I did not want to take it home. I do not eat.
You won't read them?
Candy and soda, chips in my house. So what we did was, we had a family fun night. Everything was free. We played games. I used some of the money to buy a few things, but I also got a lot of donations from people. And then partway through, I remembered I wanted to see if anybody would sign a support. So I have this as a list of support, people signing that. And also, I, when I posted in Julieta Kendrick two point oh about the meeting tonight, I got about five or six people that had made comments that they were supporting it, but couldn't make it tonight. Then I talked to Krista from Seda who's been helping me, but she can't make it. So Dodd is here, and he did a quick budget. I'm not saying we're done fundraising, because if I can raise close to nine thousand this year, I know I can raise another nine thousand next year. So we should be able to hopefully by May, have cash on hand, close to fifteen to twenty thousand, somewhere in between. So he kind of figured that in. But, you know, I kind of didn't do it alone. I had my husband, Blackberry, hosted the two dinners. Jen Burne helped out when I had to get city council and, sorry. And Lisa and Casey's PowerPoint presentation helped us a lot to fill out that grant, because it was well documented. We also downsized some of the stuff through Rain Deck. If you notice, it's only sixty-one thousand for everything, and that includes the pump, right? The pump, the sanitation and everything. We looked through that, and that was gonna be about sixty-one thousand, close to sixty-two. So I'm hoping if we get that fifty thousand dollar grant and I keep raising money, we should be able to outright pay for that. We're just asking for a match of fifteen thousand so that we can apply for that Idaho block grant.
Question?
Yes.
So on Dodd's budget, it says city in-kind ten thousand, but you're asking for fifteen thousand?
Did you put ten or fifteen?
That's just a placeholder, this in-kind, so that would be the city's involvement in some of the prep work.
Yeah.
And so you're asking for fifteen thousand in matching funds, but you don't have fifteen thousand, correct? So it's not. Are you needing more from us to make up the difference, or is that fifteen thousand plus your nine thousand? I guess I'm confused.
I guess.
Bonnie's saying she can raise fifteen thousand. I'm putting in a factor for in-kind that we can put a value up for the city. And then her proposal is ask the city cash contribution for fifteen. We're looking at different ways to spread the contributions to the cost.
And I talked to Matt Brown, who's the teacher at the ag, at the high school. And he said he could, this spring semester, he would get his class, his ag class, to come and help rip stuff up and do things. And so I have his support. I also talked to KNG, Kevin at KNG. I talked to Ben Larson at Castle Com Architect. I had talked to Nathan Stamperz, who works for my mechanical. These people are on board, but I don't have estimates yet. I just got in their stuff. So they are inclined to maybe help donate by donating some hours and not making it. So, yes.
So, two questions, one of them is for Dodd. The first one is for you. Where in our budget is this fifteen thousand is gonna come from if we decide? I mean, I looked at the budget. I'm just curious as to where the money is in our budget.
Okay, so I talked to the accountant. Revenue replacement, we can use some of the ARPA funds. Because we have not ever, we've talked about ARPA funds for different things. But what we would have to do in order to do that, we would have to make a resolution that we would use fifteen thousand towards, say, the raises for next year. We can use it for payroll. And then in-kind, that would take fifteen thousand out of the payroll that we can use.
Okay, so I thought we were using that towards our six, eight million dollar sewer project.
We were using half of it. If you look at the past, if you look at the past months that we have sent stuff, I didn't send it this month, I probably should have. I have the breakdown of what we've spent it on, and we have two separate. Sixty-four thousand goes for revenue, you know, and sixty-four is going towards.
Right, cuz I thought some of that was.
That's what we had decided.
I thought some of that was to pay for this new dump truck.
It did. That was twenty-five thousand.
So my question for Dodd is, I know the library district is trying to get a grant towards the, buying the winery for their new library. So is this grant in any way going to affect? Cuz I would, I mean, not saying I'm not for a splash pad, but if we can get a new library, especially that building for a library, I would rather go that direction. So I'm just wanting to make sure, cuz I know when we talked about library stuff, it's very particular and things can interfere with other things.
Right.
So that's a separate, I'm not involved in the library project, and.
I mean, but with the two grants?
No, no, cuz I don't imagine they're gonna apply for a block grant, cuz they either can't.
I thought that's what they said they were doing.
Well, the county would have to apply.
Yeah, it's the library district that's supplying for the grant.
To the library district.
Do you remember? I thought they said a block grant for the, to purchase that Polters Creek Winery.
I didn't think it was a block grant, because it was a grant that they don't normally get, because normally you can't buy buildings with it.
Right. I just wanna make sure that, you know, before we decide, there's not gonna be a conflict, cuz we really need a library.
I don't believe so, cuz I don't think the county is eligible for a block grant to do all the library. We looked at that a little bit. So I think it's for some other sources. So I don't, I really don't believe the plan for, the city applies for a splash pad that wouldn't conflict with the library's goals.
Most of these grants are, are separate grants. No matter where they come from, where they go, they're all these.
Well, I know, but there was a, there was a thing with our sewer grant. I thought when we were trying to get a grant for the library that we couldn't because of the block grant for the sewer.
That's cuz it comes out of the same, there's categories for block grants, and this is a public facility category, your wastewater. It's also libraries, fire halls. There's a lot of things that fit in there. The parks category is totally separate. So you couldn't, you couldn't have applied for the wastewater block grant and sponsored a library block grant. That's what we talked about.
Okay, it's been so long, it's one of the cases.
Yeah, so.
So I have a couple other questions. So when this was first approached or brought to us, we got told that there was no money involvement with us to begin with, and that you guys wanted property, and there was a whole slew of you. And you've done an amazing job, I mean, hands down, you've done all this fundraising. But I don't understand why it went from, we didn't want any money, and then the next time we got approached, you wanted seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we got told it was only three thousand dollars for the grant, and that we weren't gonna have any involvement. I mean, it's just been crazy every time it's brought to us. And so I need, I need some things cleared up. Why is it changing constantly?
I downsized.
Oh, yes, because everybody else dropped you, dropped, and then you're the only one running it.
Not really, I got, I got a lot of support.
Well, the original support isn't here. The original support that brought this to our attention is here.
So I just wanna know why it's changed so much. Why, I mean, we asked multiple times, we could go back six, eight months ago when all this started. And I know, I specifically asked two or three times, do you guys want money? No, we're not asking for money, we're not asking for money.
At that time, they.
Right, and then three weeks later, we had a meeting, and it got, how, what was it, seventy-five, was it seventy-five thousand dollars?
It was seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand dollars that we were asked for, and the other gal said that it was three thousand dollars to do the grant. So, and now we're asked, we're being asked for fifteen thousand. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Okay, so what I did was, I went through their Rain Deck compared to my Rain Deck. I called the Rain Deck and I said, okay, so we only want a few things. How can we downsize this and still make it fun, you know, still be? So we worked, we worked it out. So we still have, so to speak, hit the holes, but they'll still spray up water that we can add to it, which I plan on doing because I enjoy concession stand. I really did. I had a great time, and I wanna do it again next year, and Baseball Association wants us to do it again next year, because they were so happy they didn't have to do the truck or anything. And we really did. I mean, considering how much I made with just the duck race and the two dinners, I raised maybe three grand, you know, maybe four. And here I'm close to nine, and a lot of that was concession stand. I also had some friends that I cleaned for that donated stuff, and I raised five hundred and sixty-five dollars at a yard sale for the splash pad. So I'm trying to down, I know you're trying to get an answer for me, but I don't know why they backed off. But I'm, I understand why you said what you said last year, that, you know, that was just crazy, because we hadn't raised any money. What I'm saying is.
I don't think it's crazy, I don't. And like I said, I do respect the fact that you have worked your tail off of this, I really do. And the fact that you have shown that you've brought people with you, I do commit to that, I really do. My question is why it's constantly changed? We can never get an accurate, every time it's different, every single time. And when we gave you guys property, the next time when you guys showed up, which was only you, we got told that we didn't support it.
Well, the next time was the other, was one of the other ones, but that's when they wanted seventy-five thousand.
Right, and that we got told that we didn't support it, that's why everybody else walked away. And I'm like, we gave you guys property, we were supporting it, that was the whole, that's what we did.
Right.
So I don't know.
And I don't know what's on their mind, but what I was doing was trying to make it so that when we did ask you for money, it wasn't as much as what was brought up last year.
So how much is the grant? The last time we were told the grant was three thousand dollars.
No, it is two hundred and forty-five thousand, correct?
To do, to write the grant?
No, 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 the maximum grant from Congress is two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right, but we were told it was like three thousand dollars to write the grant, or something like that.
Thirty-five hundred.
Okay, so.
So I have raised that, and then some. So we just need to.
So what do you need to match from the city for, if you have enough to pay for the grant?
That's the write the grant.
The write the grant.
We need match, so the layout there is kind of a constriction.
In order to get the grant.
Of the match needed to get points to get the grant over. And so talking to Bonnie's made tremendous progress with the fundraising. I think the communication probably was a lot of exuberant volunteers not really knowing.
Absolutely.
And I know Krista was new, and she was trying to shepherd it along. And this has made a big difference, where you've had someone focus on the fundraising piece. And so if she says that she can fundraise fifteen thousand dollars from private donations, we have a letter saying that has to be committed by May twenty-twenty-four. If the city, if you're willing in the city budget to say there's fifteen thousand dollars, there's thirty thousand dollars, then we have to, if we can figure in some in-kind, like the students, or if Justin could do some work, that's what we need. That's, that's what we need, I don't.
So another concern for mine is, and I, I only look at this because I'm involved in so many different things in life, and I talk to a lot of people, is your involvement, is there a conflict of interest with you knowing what we have in the city and what our budgets are to what you're asking for?
No.
Who's going to?
No, because I feel like I really try to save and break it down and, and get the cost down. Plus with, you know, I applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant, which I did not need the city's. So, I mean, even if you guys say no to this, I'm still gonna go find, because Amanda from USDA has sent me a whole bunch of other grants that I can apply for that I don't need a match with the city. I'm just, this would be a quicker and easier way, but I'm not giving up. So, you know, you're not hurting my feelings at all, so.
I'm just asking because of what I hear through the community. That's why I ask, I mean, that's why we're here. It's not to pick on you, finding these.
No, no, I'm trying to keep myself distanced from it, but, you know.
Well, that's what makes it hard, though, even like five months ago, when they asked, well, how would get it, where'd the money come from? That's why people are gonna come back and say, well, how does she know that? Because she's in the books. And I don't want that, you know, I don't want someone to come to me from where I work and say, well, this is why she knows. You know what I'm saying?
And who's going to maintain it? Like, because there was talk of there was, that we were not supposed to be the ones maintaining it, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And that they were supposed to keep fundraising to maintain it. So who's supposed to maintain it?
So, and I also have the Baseball Association, and if we get, okay, so if, if all my ducks do fall in a row by next spring with the construction people and talking to them, and even if we get the block grant for two hundred and forty-five or whatever, and we get a break from those construction people, if we have funds left, because it's going to be for the park, I would like to see the Baseball Association get their lights put out. And.
Go ahead.
And I don't know, why not kill two birds with one stone, is what I'm saying. It's, I'm not just doing it for the splash pad, I'm doing it for the community. And the baseball lights will bring more people, because then we can do district tournaments, we can do all kinds of tournaments.
Baseball Association had something going on with their lights already.
I have been talking to tie their tribe, but nothing has happened yet.
Well, I thought.
They have a really hard time getting grants written for them.
Cuz didn't they have lights, they were supposed to have cannon going in?
But they were not the right ones. They were not the right ones, so they had to get rid of them.
But we're focusing on the splash pad.
I know, we are, but I'm just saying, yeah. So. And I plan on keep doing concession stand, and if I keep maybe five, six of grand, that would be enough even for maintenance. If, you know, if it's new, you should just have the chemicals and shutting it down and the electricity and.
And the insurance on it and all that stuff.
Right, but they were saying, they had talked to Potledge, and they said it was probably about a thousand a year. So if I'm raising five thousand, we would still have backup put into that splash pad so that if concession stand, you know, I'm sorry, if I'm eighty and I can't do it anymore, we'll have money banked. I mean, I'm not, just because we get the splash pad doesn't mean I'm gonna stop doing concession stand or fundraising or anything, so.
So during the day, something goes on, our maintenance guys don't work on it? Right?
Right.
If the city facility, we're not.
Yeah, I think the city would have to claim something to it.
Well, it's, it is, the city's gonna own it.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
So, so.
I think that's kind of what he was saying.
Application talks about maintenance and the, you know, you're committing to the, and however you raise the money goes in your budget to pay for that, that can be figured out, but it is a city facility.
Right, so we were taking that over, that's what I think, counting one of the legs off of his common question for this is, you're raising funds to take care of the chemicals, but then it's still on city, still on city's back to take care of it. So that's one thing that they gotta take care of.
And that's where our insurance would cover, because we have checked into ICRMP, and it's covered under the park, so.
Have you been up quiet? Any comments?
Oh, he does, he's holding back.
I'm totally with him. I personally believe it's conflict of interest, or if you're good and want anyway, to be honest with you. But I do admire your tenacity, and I hope you keep going. I think, I think maybe, I don't think it's wise for the city to move forward with this personally, and that'll be my vote. I think we have too much, too many irons in the fire.
Okay. I'm just listening.
You don't have any feedback?
I think we, I think we need this splash pad. I don't know, I can kind of see Mark's point. But I really want it to get going, to help somewhat.
Well, I mean, I would like to see a splash pad, too. I just think that at this juncture in the city's involvement with our sewer and who knows what's going on with Kendrick and everything, that it's just not the right time in my opinion.
Right, right, so.
Well, that's gonna happen for a year or more anyway, so.
My opinion is, I agree with him. I do want you to keep fighting. I want you to keep pushing forward and seeing what you can come up with, but I, for me, I'm in up two.
Okay. Sounds good? Thank you for your time.
If everybody loved the budget, we need to pass a new one.
Well, it's a tentative, we're going with Dodd.
Yeah, we don't pass it till August.
No, we don't pass it, but we gotta keep moving on with the budget and then get ready for.
So, yeah, most of it has, I fixed everything that you guys noted. The only thing I was waiting on was information from Stillman on how much we think the construction's gonna be for it. So I got all his information, so that if we're not over budget on it, we would have to open the budget. So I changed operating revenue. I made a few lines for like Army Corps, DEQ, how much that is. Sewer improvement, the whole construction part is going to be about nine million six hundred. And then under expenses, I also have it under sewer improvement phase one, so to speak. And that's where your nine thousand six hundred would be for the construction. The expense part, when it does happen, I would subtract it from there, so it will show you your revenue and your expense. Right now, we have to, have we used up all our engineering for the block grant?
It's a Krista question. I think that's the plan is to utilize, utilize that up, and, cuz you're doing monthly billing, right?
Well, the thing is, is that Keller sent me one, and we need to bill out for it, but Krista is, is on the side because of DEQ. That we wouldn't have enough funds, that we have to open up the DEQ grant, so she has to figure that. So I told Keller I can't pay that, because we don't have two hundred thousand to just write a check for until hopefully we get paid in two months type thing.
She's working on that.
Yes, she is, but she's gone this week, so I won't know until next week sometime. But if you want to, you can take a home look at it. I will do up the actual budget for publishing and show it to you in August. Well, Wendy will, I'll be on the phone. Please, no.
Down, that'd be a lot of work.
Okay, I wasn't here for the discussion of salaries. Is this the right time to talk about that again, like what the budget was specifically for the?
For employee salaries? That, that will be addressed in a ordinance for actually a discussion.
I will, yes, next month.
You're just adopting a tentative budget, so there can still be changes made. But tentative budget has to be adopted before we can have the budget hearing next month.
I move to adopt a tentative budget fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
I second it.
I think you're up, Amanda, if you wanna say something.
Um, you guys have in front of you tonight, the Dillway Park County's follow-up raise agreement. That we're going to the agreement that Lator County has signed with Sunshine Disposal to start doing collection services for all the rural cities of Lator County and all Lator County residents. And the city of Moscow is not changing their collection provider. And, you know, really the big changes in the county agreement with each rural city is just the terms of this agreement that went from ten years now to a five-year, five-year with a two-year renewal. You know, our annual rate increases that is in there based on what our agreement is with Sunshine, which is ninety percent of the CPI. The other thing, we had an amendment several years ago in our county and city agreement that included the twenty percent for administrative fees. That is included in this document as a new contract, and it's not a separate amendment to it. Those are the big changes that are within the agreement from the previous agreement that you signed in two thousand thirteen. So those are the big things there. Do you guys have any specific questions on the agreement?
These are the ones that I met with at the, during my SWAC meetings.
I was gonna address them next, I just wanted to make sure nobody had questions about the contract agreement first. I mean, that's pretty solid what we've done before. I mean, the agreements are just keeping all the cities under the county, trying to make sure we all are consistent with service. The county does a lot of work for all the seven cities, whether it's legal, programs, special events, you know, working with your maintenance and your city staff, you know, the building, all the things that we've been doing for the last ten years, so.
So, and I read, I read it, and the attorney, our attorney read it, and she's okay with it as well, so I think we're.
Yeah, I think we're the new forward.
Yeah.
And then I brought with me really quick, cuz Wendy was so kind, allowing me to have a short meet and greet. I have with me Steve Wolf from Sunshine Disposal and Sean McCabe with Sunshine Disposal. I have with me Steve Wolf from Sunshine Disposal and Sean McCabe with Sunshine Disposal. Sean manages things down in Lewiston. Steve is the regional manager under the Spokane office. And they just wanna do a quick introduction, we don't wanna take too much time. One last thing I wanna say to you guys as council members and staff. If you're getting questions from the public, I am working on a frequently asked question information form, hoping to get it out soon, so the cities can put it in their newsletters. I'm just trying to get as much information as I can right now. You know, then we can all put it on our newsletters, put it on your websites to help inform the public. I mean, the goal is for this to be a seamless transition. Obviously, there's always going to be hiccups and changes, but the goal is it'll promptly be resolved. Just so you all know, there was a whole SWAC committee that made a recommendation to the county commissioners. I'm sure Nick's kept you informed enough to date on that. It really came down to a decision based on cost of services and customer service needs. Sunshine had the best price offer for us to be in the garbage collection on a weekly basis for all those residents in the county. So, and they're looking forward to helping us solve some issues.
Their, their customer service rate that they talked about in our, our SWAC meeting is amazing. So, you know, I applaud you on your customer service rate.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the contract, so, and I didn't see any correspondence or hear any correspondence with our new attorney. So our new attorney did not have any concerns that our old, that our outgoing attorney, Ken Nagy, expressed, including what?
The old, Ken was on the disposal agreement for the city of Moscow.
Okay.
He didn't look at this. And the attorney did talk to, she talked to Wendy and she did ask me as well. She knew that I was part of the SWAC, if I had any concerns about it. And she did communicate with you, correct Wendy? That she had no, and I believe Jen, C.
L. Ranger.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the concerns that you're talking about, that Ken had was with the solid waste agreement with the city of Moscow for disposal.
Got you.
Yep, till later for that.
So the one that I manage for all of us is the collection agreement, which this is gonna be our new service provider, come October first. You know, there are going to be, I don't know if I wanna touch base really quick. I don't wanna take too much of your guys' time because I know you've got a full agenda, so, I mean, I don't wanna go on if.
Oh, it's confusing, please do.
So you get a disposal bill from the city of Moscow and that is based on the weekly volume of garbage that's picked up from your city residents and commercial businesses just inside city limits. And that is for the disposal cost for all the waste that is shipped out of Latour County for the municipal solid waste. And then you have a contract with Latour County that is for collection, recycling, bulky waste programs, and additional special events and services that we have. And then you probably get a bill sometimes if you guys do a yard waste bin, but I don't think you're doing one.
Uh, we only do it that April and October when we do the.
Bulky waste site?
Yeah.
You don't have one that's free for all, some cities are having yard waste bins like Kendrick has one and they're setting limits, it's open all the time, so.
Hope we don't do that.
So, other than that, that should be the only two bills that you're really getting. You know, I can touch on some of the things that we're foreseeing coming up with a new contract service provider if you want. At this time, we don't see any service days changing, keeping the service days hopefully change the same. There might be some changes with commercial accounts. You know, I'm gonna be working with them, we're gonna go throughout the whole county, do an audit of everybody, including the cities and all the service, which the last time we did that was in two thousand thirteen, before the carts were all delivered and implemented. You know, they're gonna be the ones taking the customer service calls, the complaints. Their phone number's gonna be out there on everything for the public to be directed to them and not inundate Wendy or myself. They're gonna give me a report on those call logs and cart changes and so forth until they come in. I'll give that to Wendy so she can make sure she's been really accurately to your residents inside city limits. Hopefully that will take some of the burden off of us. You know, they really wanna make sure their service is provided. We don't know for sure if there's gonna be new cart yet or not. That's some of the negotiations that they're doing privately with their current service provider, moving their waste. Some carts may be changed, some of them may not. If they don't get changed out, there's gonna be new labels put on all of them that direct the public to contact Sunshine. The garbage is still gonna be handled and processed at the same way it is now. It's still gonna go under the city of Moscow disposal, you will still have that disposal bill. It'll go to the solid waste processing facility. The bulky waste sites will still operate the same. And the one change that will happen within is the recycling boxes. Sunshine doesn't see it feasible and efficient to continue servicing the big roll off boxes. And, you know, there could be some changes within that as we move forward. We're not for sure how some of that, you know, might play out. They wanna just put in dumpsters that co-mingle recycling is put in and they're gonna do a weekly service route for all the recycling dumpsters. You know, you might start out with two dumpsters, hopefully that's efficient enough. If it's not, then we'll go to three. You know, it's just gonna be a matter of each entity's gonna have a different need. There is gonna be a push that they're hoping to maybe do some commercial curbside recycling possibly. They're gonna work that out privately between themselves and their commercial businesses when they're doing that route, which would help take some of the impact off of the drop off dumpsters that are filled up by commercial businesses that are really meant for residential, but we can't police them, as we talked about before. So, I mean, there's a lot going on in a short period of time. You know, if you get concerns from the public, you know, direct them to me. Steve's got some cards he's gonna give you guys. Make sure you guys have their contact numbers. You know, we're all just trying to work through this as a team together. As I keep saying to everybody, I'm open here, your guys' feedback, questions, yes, Justin?
Yes, so as far as our sludge disposal goes, right now we're contracting with a compost facility in Lewiston through Latour Sanitation.
That's separate. Because that's, we haul it ourselves to them. There's, they don't do any, you guys don't have a compost facility now.
Uh-uh.
So that, that's, that's null and void.
So all the disposal's still the same, this is just for collection.
So if we have, so if we have a sludge disposal issue again, we need a roll off cart, we would call the.
No, you'd call, you'd call Sunshine. Cause you can dump out there at, can you dump the clear water compost?
I would say that you'd probably wanna get Latour Sanitation to call on that, uh, dumps, on that roll off when you're moving your sludge.
So we'll continue to take it there.
Yeah, and like you said, if they, if we need a roll off, just, just call in when we're finished.
And that could be addressed if there's a hiccup at another time, Justin, as you know, I'm willing to try and help and, you know, who's not the same, we're, how things will migrate if you.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to look ahead, cause with our new sewer facility, I don't know what kind of sludge we're gonna have. Cause it's gonna have a whole brand new, um, influent, um, separation, break chamber, trash, rag, all that's gonna all be taken out now automatically and dumped in a cart. So we'll be hauling that to somewhere, not to compost, but to garbage.
Yeah, so.
So just FYI, you know.
Yeah, I don't know if you have a plan or I don't know really much about that process, if it's laid out and dried up in a sense to where it's not.
I know the city of Moscow is to take theirs to the transfer station, depending on the consistency of it.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, I don't know if you have a, you know, and then if you kinda scooped it up and it was garbage and it's dried out because it's just garbage that ends up in there is what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, and this is the pre filtration, you know, it's garbage.
Yeah, on the garbage side, we're, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Take your, just on the sludge side.
Yeah, so you have landfill in Lewiston or so, or?
No, again, so the garbage that's collected, whether it's from the bulky waste sites or from the residents, it's still gonna be processed on Highway eight.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So the disposal process is not changing, just collection. So when you think about the garbage services, you gotta think about our recycling programs and then you gotta think about collection costs, which is separate. And that's where we're tied together with our county connections and contracts. And then you have a disposal contract with the city of Moscow. And the city of Moscow manages the transportation, the disposal, and that's one thing that we've worked through that all waste generated in Latour County is to be processed at that processing facility under our agreements with the city of Moscow. And it doesn't matter who's hauling the garbage to that processing facility. If it's generated in Latour County, it has to be accepted there under the city of Moscow agreements.
So it's just gonna go.
This education, trying to complete that circle, like Mark said, is confusing.
Y'all trust.
So, it is very confusing, and I was in the meetings and it's confusing. But I do know that Amanda and Nick really stood up for our services here, so please be patient with us too. But I, I know we're good hands here, but the more we do this education, the better, FYI, because it is confusing.
And, and, you know, really when it comes to the citizens, they just want their garbage picked up and they want their service provided and they wanna be able to count on that. And that's the most important. And it is a highly demanded service, it is a personal service, it's a weekly service, it needs to get done. You know, that's my number one concern is making sure the residents are happy. And like I said, you know, Wendy, most of you down here know how to get ahold of me. If there's a problem, Dick, I'm, I'm always happy to try to get on it right away and get it resolved. You know, hopefully now that's all gonna be directed to them for the most part. If it continues as a problem, of course, I wanna be looped in. They're gonna give us a call log report where you, your city staff, your city clerk, myself will know where the problems or hiccups are being. But hopefully, you know, I mean, it's gonna take some time during the transition, but the goal is for the public, we're to be pretty seamless.
We appreciate it, Amanda.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions? Anyone to say a little, few words to you guys, I think?
Hey, Merrick Council, just a little bit about the company. We're a fourth generation garbage company, family owned. Our after, our garbage trucks, we're retired draft horses out of the city of Seattle. So on the day they, when the police department retired the horses, the family picked them up, hooked them up to the cart and actually went through the streets of Seattle, throw, huh, throwing garbage. Out way and from there we've grown, we're out of the Seattle metropolitan area. Kinda got forced out by all the great big companies, but we do service communities as far as Republic, Washington, and we come as far south as, as Lewiston, Idaho. Our business model is mainly small cities and medium sized cities. We don't have any big metropolitan areas that we service that, other than the city of Spokane Valley and now we just do roll off service in there. We don't do the residential collection. What we've found in our years of providing service to small communities is one of the most important things we do is our drivers will check in with the clerk before we leave town. Wendy, so you'll get to know the driver fairly well. So if something's going on in town, the driver knows it before he leaves town.
That's awesome.
Cause a lot of times the residents, if they hear the truck and then all of a sudden it's like, oh hell, at least three blocks away. And then it's like, I'll put my cart out anyway. If we give Wendy a call, you know, more likely we'll swing around and, and get it before we leave town, at least a couple times before we start taking a picture of it and saying, hey, he's doing this way too much. But, so that's, this worked out really well for us and we believe in, in good service, good communication. That's why our, you know, our misses and our complaints are very low in the company. We, we do take it serious. And you'll have a, a call number coming directly to us instead of Amanda. Amanda trying to take care of, well, in the counties, you've got six thousand accounts, you got one person. Just trying to run a solid waste department and take all the calls. A little burdensome, I think that there's misses, just through that, just through the sheer volume. And we'll be able to handle that because that's the way a lot of municipalities handle it. They, we're the guys picking it up, we should be getting the calls if there's complaints. And we're educated enough that the complaint's big enough. We know when to give Amanda a call saying, hey, call's not, will probably stay with us, she's able to get a call too. So we're, we're mature, mature enough and we know enough, we've been in it long enough to know and Amanda needs a call because the calls don't really go beyond us. But ninety-nine percent of the time, we're able to handle it in-house and satisfy the needs of the customer. Carts, or Amanda brought up recycling. Most of the world goes co-mingle recycling now. You just put all your recyclables in one bin and then it's sorted out at a material recovery facility. That's, that's what's happening out there. What we felt was a better way to handle recyclables was using a front load bin. So we will service the recycling location weekly. And with that sort of system, we can add or subtract bins in the community that needs them. So what we're envisioning is that you'll have a sign out there. It'll tell your residents when those bins are serviced. It'll be Wednesday at whatever. So if the resident goes, goes down there and the cardboard's the issue, somebody might be moving into town. Here's all the moving boxes and they've taken their fair share of volume. Well, if they read the sign, you would hope the resident's saying, hey, it's full, but I know it's gonna be empty tomorrow. It's not a, it's not a guess when you call when it's gonna be hauled. You would hope, you would hope in a month. I know I'm asking a little bit, wishing for a lot of that.
People go down there and if it's.
Yeah, but this way.
Too late to break a box down.
I know.
Well, I mean.
And they'll sit there.
I take care of it.
But this is gonna be different, this is gonna be different. This, I, I feel this is gonna be a better way.
Oh, we should remember, we stopped by your recycling area down there, it looked nice. It's pretty good to me. It's like, wow, this is the cleanest one I've seen of, uh, the cities that we've moved around. But we're, we're hoping that'll, that'll work. And I think that the service is more predictable. And guess what? If there's volume in the container, they don't really need to break the boxes down. You would hope they would, so the two boxes wouldn't fill it up, but if, but if they did, carts still would compact it anyway. So we'll, we'll just see how it goes, it'll.
If they break the boxes down, flip them in there, it'd only take one million supply. It does a full box. And they just pile up and, I mean, there's no, no room at all and no time.
If it, if it gets, if it gets to be a problem, we can modify the lids. I'm just hoping that, you know, it's easy. We can, we can put it to where everybody's sitting there, you know, putting it through the mail slot. But hopefully they, they realize that, hey, this is a lot easier. And hopefully we get, roughly a hundred percent, we don't know. But it's, we, we, if we, we can get into that eighty-five percent, you know, we'll, we'll see how that works out. I know people. Been in the business forty years. I know what you're, what you're talking about. So anyway, that's, that's the company. We are, like I said, family owned and we do operate a number, a number of businesses in the state of Idaho. We do the city of Lewiston. We just went into our tenth year with the city of Lapway. It was ten years ago, Sean and I were just talking about it the other day, that Lapway was having a lot of problems. We do the rural collection for Cooby County. We do, we do have a number of businesses that, and that we've serviced in Idaho for whole since the mid seventies. If, if any questions.
I have a question. Are they still having the Saturday?
Yeah, that's part of the program, the bulky waste.
Yeah, the bulky waste program's not changing, most things you should not see a change on.
So Robert Dean still has his job.
Robert Witt?
Yes. He's my brother in law.
His last name Witt, oh right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You know, that would be.
I call him Robert Dean.
I understand that, I'm just making sure we're talking about the same person. I knew you guys related Mickey, but I wasn't sure the connection.
I just wanted to know whether, cause he likes that.
He does, and my goal and recommendation is for Sunshine to retain him. And they will be more than likely sending him a letter and that will be communications between Robert and Sunshine. But the goal is to retain him down there.
But he's highly recommended.
Exactly. He's highly recommended by me before he brought it up, so. I highly recommend him also.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
He's a great guy, he does a great service down there, he don't have a lot of complaints. He's, yeah, we need people that live within the communities, that know the communities, that are patient and good with the public, willing to help when they need the help, but if it's not safe for them to help, they know how to say no. I mean, you know, we don't want nobody getting hurt, right? Nobody, nobody being jeopardized, so it works both ways. And when people get stuff loaded in their trucks, they should bring someone with them to help unload them. You know, but that doesn't always work either, so, you know. So, but the goal is, I mean, they do wanna retain local employees, but that's really gonna be between that person, that personal preference of that individual.
No, we don't, we don't, we're not a company that feels we need to turn everything upside down and change things for the sake of change. Things that work well, we're, we'll work with community and existing employees. But like any, you know, we, we just need to comb through that, we're not, we don't have any preconceived notions of, okay. You know, no one knows what they're doing here and we're changing everything.
I recommend it.
That isn't us, that's, you know, we, we haven't served small towns for four generations without learning a thing or two. And that's one of the things that's like, you don't need to do that, you know, it's just, it doesn't make sense. It never has made sense, but.
Robbed and I planted trees around to keep the river from.
Washing it out?
Washing it out.
Oh my God, how many times have we had to refill that thing? Three or four? Kinda like potlatch, moved that site four times, kinda, yeah. That's a great idea. And if you're painting for trees, I'd hope you would paint for those.
Well, I move to approve the, allow, I move to allow the mayor to sign the Latour County Solid Waste Agreement.
I'll second.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. And like I said, I urge you to be in touch. Yeah. Be in touch, we'll work with the hiccups, we're willing to try to keep the public positive about it. We want their input, but, you know, nobody likes change.
Did you say October 1st?
That, yeah, but this go year, October 1st.
I think this would be a good change.
Yeah. That would get left down.
Not now? When does that sugar ring, David? You guys know how they're gonna hold it. I think we're gonna go if you guys don't leave nothing from us. And thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Appreciate it. Good later.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're done on
Six, six.
You have everybody, yeah.
I don't know what this is.
Okay, so in Cassell, we have certain modules that we use. General ledger, accounts payable, payroll, auditing, those kind of things. Utility management, but we don't have cash receipt, receiving. Because we do it all manually, which causes more errors. Plus, we need cash receiving if we plan on doing a, what do you want to call it?
ACH credit card?
Yes, ACH.
Isn't this what you brought to us a few months ago?
Yeah.
So
So we talked, we both did a webinar, so to speak, a Zoom with both of them. Invoice Cloud has a lot more to offer than Paya. They're a little more expensive, they'll be about, with cash receiving in them, probably about $250.
Total per, per month?
Per month.
To use their services?
Plus having, having cash receiving. If we get cash receiving, it's automatically going to be on our box to Cassell. So instead of the invoice every month being 402, it will be 502.
So, okay, I'm confused for just a second.
Okay.
So is this two different things or is it one different, one thing from Cassell?
Okay, there's two.
Cassell has the cash receiving module. And Invoice Cloud and/or Paya both work with this cash receiving module. They, they need it in order to work. So what both of those do individually, they're, they're two separate choices, is they allow for the, the electronic billing. You can set up like an auto pay for your utility bill, this is customers' and they can still pay online or, or over the phone with their credit card. They can do an ACH kind of a payment, like through their bank account. What else is there?
So are they getting charged for that then? They'll get charged like a percent, right? Yeah, 3% or something.
3%. Now, the other thing that they do is your, when she does the billings, it would be paperless and they could see their bill automatically online on the first. And they can pay it right away or put a reminder on there. But it's helpful for people that like, they forget about it. They even forget to call us until they get that notice put on the door. Paya, it's 995 a month, but they are not, they're kind of new. They've only been with Cassell six months. And the thing is, is with that, it works, integrates with Cassell. So when there's a payment made, it will automatically go to Cassell and make that payment in our system. So she doesn't have to go in and manually type it all in.
So it's 995 per customer or just
Per month to use their services.
So where do the extra 250 and the $100 come from?
Okay, the two, the 250, the 150 to 250 dollars is Invoice Cloud if we went with Invoice Cloud. But it's $100 period for us to open that module and start using it through Cassell. Because right now it's closed, we cannot get into it.
It's $100 a month to use that app?
That module, yes. So my recommendation is, number one, I got to see how, and that's why I talked to Wendy when I got back from my training at Cassell, was it's very helpful for, number one, more accuracy, less auditing time. And it's more helpful for us on a daily basis. That I would even consider if you would recommend that we at least get cash receiving, try it out for a year, get to know it first. And then maybe in six months or a year from now, for December of 2020, or October of 2024, we can look into these again and decide if we want to pay that extra. Because it is a cost to us, unlike Access Idaho is not a cost to us. But every end of the month, I have to take all the ACHs and figure out, because Access Idaho will submit like five different deposits on the same day. So I have like $698.52 I have to figure out and make sure I have all the paperwork for it. So I have to do a lot of calculations to make sure that adds up. Okay, those are over there. Also, the regular cash deposits and stuff. So I have to manually basically put all the deposit stuff into the bank before I can reconcile.
Okay, so I'm very confused because I've heard a bunch of different prices
I'm right along with you.
And a bunch of different things. So just, just, just bear with me for one second, okay? So Paya is 995 a month. That is, that is one of the options that you're asking for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the other one is this cash receiving, receiving from Cassell, correct? And that is either 100 or
No, 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 that's only 100.
Okay, so where did the 250 come in?
Because that's Invoice Cloud. Paya and Invoice Cloud are two separate companies that do exactly the, so to speak, the same thing.
So if we do the receiving, receiving, receiving or whatever, the Cassell one, it's $100. So if we do that and the Paya, it's $110, but if we do the Invoice Cloud, that's 350, correct?
Approximately 350. He just gave us an estimate. It depends upon the size of how much utilities we send out, bills we send out.
So the invoice
Okay, but
Regardless of which app, you have to open the cash receiving
You have to have the Cassell one open for how much money.
Right, right.
So it's gonna pay it or Invoice Cloud that matches with Cassell's.
So this, but that will allow the, the Cassell will allow the automatic payments, right?
Correct.
Any billing. So what is the, what does the Paya or the Invoice Cloud bring to the party?
They allow citizens to
The electronic billing.
Yes.
The billing
Through their phone, whatever.
Like a bill pay sort of situation.
An automatic
Yes.
Right, but they can
That's 995 a month for them?
Or 250 for the Invoice Cloud. But the electronic billing can still be done through Cassell. So they'll get an electronic bill, but they can't.
Cassell doesn't do the electronic billing.
It's just like
Or Paya does.
So like if you go, you open an app, it's basically, instead of saying a module, you're saying an app. You're paying $100 for that module, no matter what. So then to add the other one.
Because that's Cassell, that's what we already own.
Yeah, I get that, I get that. I'm just trying to figure out, I was just trying to figure out what Paya or Invoice Cloud brought to the party.
Okay, they're like Access Idaho, you know, where you can click and go online and, but it's easier because it will be an app you can download to your phone. And it will text you and say, your bill is due. This is how much it is, you want to pay it now. And then you just click yes. If you automatically have your credit card or your bank account number.
And then at the end of the day, that makes it easier for you because you don't have to break things down with, like in the Access Idaho. That's what you're saying?
Correct.
If they, if they pay through that app, then it just automatically goes
So if I
Cash receiving into Cassell, it doesn't need Bonnie to have the paper receipt and she finds it and
Right, try to break it down and all that. So if I go in there and I pay that, I'm still getting charged that 3%?
They do have different charges, Paya and Invoice Cloud do have different charges.
But I'm still getting charged 3% if I come in here and use a credit card with you anyway. So it's easier for me just to do it at home and have my couch and my pajamas.
Right, then you would have the access. You, we wouldn't necessarily need to send out a postcard bill.
And I could still, that would be helpful.
Email to them. Then it comes in their email like everybody else's bill that's
So the difference for you, that you found between Paya and Invoice Cloud, you said Invoice Cloud was better?
It has more
More benefits.
More benefits. They also have better customer service for especially elderly people that might have an issue. They're, they're easily to get ahold of, they have a whole big customer service. Where Paya is still, they're, they're in the process of trying to be Invoice Cloud, but they're not. And here's my recommendation, okay? They're both really good from what I've talked with Farah at Cassell about. Because I was like, just be honest with me with her. And so she did tell me Paya was not as good as Invoice Cloud. But we also get a huge discount through Cassell to hook up. And the hookup will be $4,650.
That's on top of the monthly thing?
Yeah, that's just to get trade on and everything. So here's my recommendation.
Wow.
I would like to learn the cash receiving first before we jump into everything all at once. Because we are only here part-time, part-time, it will take a lot.
So it's $4,000 for your training to use Paya?
It's not, no, no, that's for the Cassell.
No, that's Invoice Cloud.
When we first got Cassell 10 years ago, they had to buy utility management separately and general ledger separately and all the little things that
All their little branches, right?
Yeah, they're all little parts of the one big Cassell that we have on both of our, on both of our computers.
So the 4,000 is not
It's cash receiving through Cassell, it's Cassell's
So
So we have to pay $100 a month plus the initial 4,000?
So this is what they gave me, okay? Cash receiving has been a cost of $5,550.
To start it.
To get the module in to buy, okay? We're just talking Cassell. But if we get Invoice Cloud, the total, the import will be 3,500 cash receiving web services, 1,000. Utility management web services, 1,000. But they are giving us an Invoice Cloud discount of 6,000 and special consideration discount of 900. So instead of 11,550, if we got Invoice Cloud, it's 4,650. But
But that doesn't, does that include the 5,000 or the Cassell?
Yes, that was the breakdown of all that together.
Yes.
So if we were gonna do Cassell, it would actually be cheaper to take advantage of that discount?
Yes. But the other thing too is, okay, yes, one time
But then it's a monthly thing.
It's a license fee we have to pay for the training and the setup. One time fee. And then it's $100 for cash receiving. So even if we just do cash receiving, it's gonna cost us 5,550. But if we add Invoice Cloud to it, it's 4,650.
Okay, so then my question is
But then it's 350 a month.
Right, so the difference between Paya and Invoice Cloud is $200 a month. So you're looking $10 to approximately $250. What makes, what would make, convince me to go from $10 to $250?
I don't, exactly.
Other than you're getting a discount because you're still out the five grand. But I mean, you're still gonna
Actually
You're still gonna get the monthly fee.
Right, you're still getting that, that $10 monthly fee or the 250.
I mean, if we want to, we can do Paya and try it. I don't know how well they will be, but they looked really good, didn't they? They did a whole, they were the ones that did the whole
We, we actually saw some of their stuff, we didn't really see any of
And the best part about Paya is installation, training and support are waived.
For Paya?
From Paya. So basically, you still have to pay the 5,550 for the cash receiving. But all we have to pay is 995 for Paya.
There's nothing else per month or not?
Nope. Nope.
So can you change like after, if after a year you decide you don't like Paya, can you change?
I guess there are contracts.
Right.
Is there a contract? I didn't hear anything about that.
No, no contract that I know of.
I love the idea that you guys have that, or customers have that option to help you out. I think, I love to put stuff online, even though I work at the post office. But I think that's great, but I, I don't know what to do.
I, if nothing more, I'm asking that we get at least cash receiving so that we can learn it. And maybe in a year or six months or whatever, make that decision better. Because we, from what I've seen, it's, it's easier, but I don't know how it's gonna work and I don't want
Right, but that's the $5,000 one, right?
Right.
So why not add $10 a month? I mean, if you're gonna go that far, why not add that other one?
My, my question is if we're gonna spend 5,000, then we can give it actually $600 cheaper. Yes, it's a little more money. Is there a way to just like buy it, but suspend it while we've learned the other process? I mean, I don't know, I just wondered.
The 600 dollars?
But there's still gotta be a hidden fee on that 995.
Right, but you're saving 600 dollars to get the cloud one.
Right, there's still gotta be a hidden fee on that 995 one. It's like the cable bill. They give it to you for this price for years
For two years, you can sign it for
And then all of a sudden, it's $6,000 a month.
So my question here
So yeah, you're not saving any.
If we get the cash receiving, we will have a clearer picture. Because right now, what we're seeing is what Paya can do for the customer, but we're not seeing what it can do for Cassell because
Just your cash receiving, what does it do for you without adding Paya or Invoice Cloud?
Doesn't do anything for your utility?
Yes, yes, okay. So what it's going to do is when she enters stuff, we can, under utility management, it can now go into cash receiving, which would automatically put it into my bank account and I won't have to type it. And, but she will still have to manually put that stuff in utility management until we get a system where the customer does it and then it automatically drops into Cassell.
Do you have less customers to use on
So, and it will also balance my accounts payable for the accountant on a monthly basis. And it will balance my utility monthly too. So it will make it more accurate because we seem to have an issue sometimes at the end of the month because I put in, I kind of put in stuff that actually is not gonna fall in until October and it messes up. And then Bailey's gotta go and figure all it out. And I'm just looking at the accounting end of it because we've, you know, I'm really pushing that we get the accountant down to one day and not two, or a day and a half. I was down to a day and a half this year.
No, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
The cash receiving actually will work with everything, the general ledgers. I don't have to do all the, the journal entries that I would have to do because it will just pull stuff from different areas to put in there. And that's why I'm asking if we could at least get that, try it out and revisit these and maybe get a better picture of how this is going to fall into cash receiving.
How much, like in, like in six months, then how much would it be to add one of those?
I don't know yet. See, I don't know if, if it's gonna stay the same price. You know what I'm saying? If they'll waive everything or not because we didn't, yeah, do it in a bundle.
So I think that, you know, to have the proper tools for your job, I think that's a great thing, I really do. I, I just, I don't
I mean, I would like to save you guys money, so, you know, not you guys, but the city money. So I'm just asking for that module so that we
That module's $100 a month extra, correct?
Yes.
$5,000 initial and then $100.
55.
5,500 and then $100 a month.
Yep.
But then he said that it was less if you got one with the 4,000.
The Invoice Cloud.
But then that's 250 a month.
Then that's 250 a month. So you're saving 600, but then, you know, you're adding on 250. Well, then it's like 10, 150.
It's 250.
Well, no, instead of 100, it's 350.
Up to 250.
Yeah, so it could be up to 350 if we go with the Invoice Cloud. But if we go with the Paya, which isn't offering any discounts as far as like with Cassell, you're getting it for $10 a month for the first.
That's, I'm gonna go with that's my vote. I, I think that
But Access Idaho is free, right?
To the city, yes.
Yes.
But it all has to be entered in manually.
How long does that take, like?
It just depends on how many credit card payments we get.
Like an hour or five hours?
I don't.
Well, this, well, this
She's the one that enters.
No, when you're, when you're doing No, when you're, when you're doing your with-bank statements.
Oh, well, that depends upon if I do it right or if there's, I'm a dollar or two off my bank crap. Then I have to go back and go, crap, I did that wrong.
10 hours a month, five hours a month?
Um, sometimes it's two hours and sometimes it's all day, isn't it? I, I always have to like, I gotta go home, I'll do it again tomorrow.
Is that, is that a month or, I think Mark was asking per month?
Yes.
So two to 10 hours a month?
So, and is this gonna, how is this gonna, you said it would help with the accounting at the end of the year? Is that gonna save us money at the end?
Yes.
Like?
But it's all in there.
Hopefully, the accountants won't be billing us as much. I mean, they bill us. You know, we're somewhere between 15 and 20 grand a year. And that's because they always have to come back the next day. And we gotta pay for their travel and all their.
They're gonna be here a lot with this wastewater stuff too.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we don't have modules for that are blacked out, but, I mean, it's up to you guys, whatever you wanna do. We can always revisit it in a year, but we just thought we would give it a whirl. I mean, I don't want to commit to Paya or Invoice Cloud right now because I want more information, don't you?
I don't know anything about a cash receiving. I haven't heard hardly anything about that.
No, 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 I mean, just Invoice Cloud. He only just talked to us. He didn't give us a rule at all. Yeah. I mean, it's up to you. Either way, we still work.
And may the ladies do a lot of.
No, they do, I agree. And I think, like I said, they have the proper tools. It's, it's good for the job.
Probably need those tools and.
I mean, we want those systems.
And we wanna make it easier for citizens too to pay their bills. And they can get, and, and they get a ding on their phone and they're at work. At lunch hour, they can hit pay and they're not getting a pay.
But, but, but Casell doesn't do that. So that's off the table at the moment if we don't go with that.
I would download and have to pay one until we were leaving. I used to get one, my bank, they'd send a check, voila. I bet you that's what a lot of people do.
There's a lot of people, yeah. We've had just this, this month, a couple of people called. They use bill pay through their bank, but checks didn't make it to us. So they have.
I'm holding it with the post office.
That's all?
Kidding. So I'm holding it with the post office.
It's your fault.
It's my fault. Sorry.
Anyway, I'm just saying that that's not for a person.
I don't know.
You've said that about seven times.
I know.
Make a decision.
It's okay to say no.
Why do I have to make a decision?
Hey, I made it. I just made a.
I think it's up to Mark and Vicky.
I wouldn't do anything right now. Save, save, save.
We, we are probably gonna need that. I mean.
Module.
Yeah, the way that society is going and everyone's growing and doing. Do you think you have enough people to pay online? Have they said anything about it?
I think if we had one of these, Invoice Cloud or Paya, I think we would have a lot more people doing that. I've, I've been asked by many people, can't you just save my credit card number and take the payment every month? Or can I set up auto pay? And, and I can't because I don't have the thing that does that. I said, you can, you can do it through your bank or your, your credit union or.
And sometimes online.
You can get online, you can, you can pay with a credit card or your debit card on, on the city's website. So I mean, that, and that's increased since we started doing it. There's more and more people doing that, even with the fees.
Then you think about the people that do pay, say it's 10% of people, is it worth $5,000? And how long is it gonna take to pay that $5,000 off of those 10% of people that are paying?
But then you gotta figure it.
I can't answer that.
Right, right.
Right.
But that's, that's what we're thinking here, if pay is going how long and what's the breakdown, what's best.
I do think more people would, would use it. I, I think that there is interest out there. Is everybody gonna use it?
So let me ask the, you guys out there, what are, what, do you pay your VISA bill online?
I pay all my stuff on my apps.
I don't pay online, it's my bank.
I pay everything online.
I just did auto pay, just with other accounts and I get that.
So the thing that I look at is, okay, it's gonna save them time, but we don't know how much. Because you're saying, what is it gonna save us and how long it's gonna save us? But you're not taking into consideration that Casell is not going to do that. We need to learn Casell before we move to the, to the other ones.
Right.
So Casell, the only thing that it's gonna save us on is the audit at the end of the year, at this point, and bonnie and Wendy's hours.
Right.
So if we can save, you know, say 2,500 the first year for the accountant and whatever their hours are, I mean, that's gonna put it more realistically.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is we gotta think about those costs and where we're breaking down and how long it's taking.
Right, but the.
It's just that for those customers.
But the implement of the, the electronic billing isn't even where, we wanna, they wanna learn Casell first. So that's what we need to focus on, how much that's gonna save us before we go to the online billing and all of that. That's a separate thing.
Or we can do Paya and for 995 and give it a whirl. If we don't like it, we can get rid of it.
So if, as far as saving the labor though, does that mean you won't put in those hours and therefore the city won't be paying that salary? Or you just have other things?
We have other things to do, especially.
I didn't know that we had access items online. I didn't know we had access item about.
Well, I mean, it's their hours going towards something that might be more beneficial.
Yeah, like they could put time into something else.
But we're not gonna actually automatically save that one.
So then it's the, it's, yeah.
At the end of the year and turn on the program to potentially have a different module.
We could try it for a year and see and have a discussion then.
Try it, take Casell for a year and then we, we give up? We're just out the five grand?
No, do the Paya too.
Do other customers know that we have access item? Because I didn't.
It probably comes more to people who come in because they'll say, can I just use my debit card? And I'll, and you know, and I, I can explain about the fees and everything like that.
Right.
I did have it in the newsletter. I'm pretty sure when we first started offering it, we've had it for quite a while. So, but I don't have it in there like every time. So if you missed it, you missed it.
And maybe we can put it out there in utility bills.
We could.
That's a good idea.
Most people don't try to read their numbers.
Well, hopefully, we won't be putting that T O C notice on there too much longer.
I don't know, you guys need to make them mine. What do you think, Nick?
I'm, I mean, I believe in having the proper tools for the job. I'm just looking at the, you know, the 55. I mean, I think if we're gonna end up going that way, we should probably get it before it goes up in price. But I am concerned about the 5,500 dollars a month.
Yeah, I'm worried about that too. Where's the 5,500 coming from?
Is that out of our, we have office supply budgets or something? Is that what it comes out of or did it come out of office?
It would come out of, okay, so because we would be using it for water, wastewater, sewer, sanitation, it would come out of all those in the budget. So it would probably go under computer.
Well, is there enough?
Or office expense.
Aren't you wanting two new monitors as well?
Yes.
Is there enough in the budget?
There's two thousand.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need two monitors at feet.
So it's either two monitors or this?
Yes.
Or neither. It's all up to you guys.
Yeah, or neither.
Yeah, gosh, I don't know.
That's how the world turns.
Oh, I know. I just, it makes me sick.
It's through the computer.
It is, and I understand it makes the job so much easier.
I know, but it's, it's the, it's the $5,000. It's just a huge chunk and you're not able to like get that quickly to pay. You know what I'm saying? To recoup that?
I wish we knew what we'd be saving on the accounting bill.
Right.
That would make it easier.
Well, we can table it for a year and I can do some figures.
Can we bring it back next month? I just.
I can't because I won't be here.
So you have to table it till September?
And we can table it till September and then we can still get it done.
Okay, let's table it.
So.
And then we can get more information. I.
I make a motion to table council consideration, which is a proceeding for Casell.
I said, did you say?
Yes. I got to have time to think and swallow all this.
Well, and we can get you more information.
That would be great.
Yeah.
You know what I have with you here?
Maybe more of a better breakdown because like Invoice Cloud we just did yesterday. So they kinda threw something together. It could be less than 100, you know?
Yeah, we need some concrete stuff, like better information and prices. And maybe see, like, if the accountant can give us kind of a breakdown of how much that might save us. So we have a better idea of what we're.
Correct.
Actually saving.
Okay.
What do you? Wages.
Uh, no, number seven.
That is the.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Ignore me.
Ordinances which would increase mayor and council salaries.
Who wrote these ordinances?
This is, I copied an ordinance that was in the book from the last time the wages were raised.
Do you need to read the ordinance?
Did you read yours on there?
I did. So in the past, did, did attorney always review any ordinance or is it normal or company takes them?
I didn't have the attorney review this because there's, the only thing that changed was the amount. And you guys can set whatever salary you decide to set. So I didn't feel like it needed to spend any money on having her review this.
Yeah, it seems pretty.
Cut, right?
Was that ever done in the past with Ken? That's curiosity, like where they were.
Ken wrote most of our ordinances.
So he probably wrote this one originally.
When was the last time the race happened?
2004?
Two.
When that was? It was like 20 years ago or something like that.
Yeah, 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 it was years ago.
Um, I make a motion to accept that ordinance 2023-02.
I need to vote to suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm gonna do suspend the rules.
They're suspending the rules?
Yeah.
We're just suspending the rules, right?
You have to suspend the rules unless you wanna read this for the next three months.
Oh, no.
Did you second it, Vicky?
Yes.
Okay, just suspend the rules.
Just suspend the rules.
All in favor of suspending the rules, right?
Okay, I'll read the title.
No, we're not. We're just dealing with suspended rules.
This is ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance of the City of Juliette, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, establishing the salaries of the mayor and city council and providing for an effective date.
Now we can motion. Correct. Okay, now I make motion to accept ordinance 2023-02.
I second.
That's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
It falls on you, Dick.
Well, I'm gonna vote yes.
Thanks for the money.
I think that's the first time we've had a tie.
Yeah.
I'm proud of you, Nick.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. We do the rates of the.
You should have brought up the rest of this.
No kidding.
Um, so these, in, in this little spreadsheet thing are, you can see our current rates. And then if you did a 5% increase, which doesn't require a budget hearing, straight across the board, those, those would be new rates for the next fiscal year. You can do with that, but you don't, that's just for your information. You're not approving or anything, but you're just discussing tonight.
The hospital rate goes up constantly. Days of boys, the girls, more money each year.
This is our water, sewer, and garbage rates.
For context, is this, it's a pretty normal rate that has gone up like what, 4.99% most years, right?
5%.
5%.
We've increased them by more in the past. It all goes back to whatever the auditor says. Um, after they do our yearly audit on, you know, which fund is struggling and which fund isn't.
Well, there was one year with the garbage that it went up, but we absorbed that and did increase that, correct?
Correct.
I believe.
But then we did, we did increase it.
But not that year, that.
No.
But, but there was one year that we absorbed the, the cost, the increase from county. Yeah, so we didn't pass that on to our customers, our citizens.
And part of our rates are dependent on look, our surrounding communities to meet our ground locations. We have to be in line with, you know, what the grant, grantee or grantor is saying we should be in line.
So speaking of which, and thank you, so in the case of the sewer rate, this 5% is in line with what the community voted for. This is in addition to any rate feeding hype that they voted for in addition to that. And I'm speaking specifically to the sewer, is that correct?
As far as I understand, the sewer rate was accepted to go up a certain percentage each year to get to the level that it will eventually be at.
Yeah, we were starting early, so it wasn't a big.
So there wasn't a huge.
Hit right up it, yeah.
But there was a sewer.
So this is in line?
Right.
Yeah, as far as I understand, I have a number in front of me, but as far as I understand, that's what the plan was to gradually get it to where it needed to be, so.
So was it 20 hours in one year?
Yeah.
So as a general pattern, maybe this is too general a question, the, the fees go up approximately 5% every year.
Not, not necessarily they must. 5% is the limit that you can raise the, the rates without having a public hearing.
Because I was gonna say, I thought we did 3% a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, so there's, uh, 5% is the most we can.
It's the highest, so that's what they're gonna look at it.
Yeah, we haven't said that we are. These are just what it would look like at 5%. But the sewer one, we, we haven't set to, so that it's not that.
It's kind of low.
Yeah.
And it was still in line, but.
Still to come up as we moved along before it was operational, so it wasn't a big hit.
Yeah, yeah, we just lifted it a little at a time each year to jack it up. You have to do it that way in order to to make, so people can afford it.
So that was just for us to look at, correct?
Yeah, this will be on the agenda next month.
So you just wanna go on then?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Staff reports.
I just told my, you know, I called Lemon Dust Abatement the day after the last city council meeting. And they said they put us on their schedule, but I haven't seen them yet. And I meant to call them today to get an update, but I'm surprised that they haven't been down already. So it's still coming, the dust abatement. Ryan and I are in the process of chopping our way through alleys and the trail eventually. We got Old Main done, we got the upper part of it done, we got below the school done today. So we're just trimming and trying to make sure all the roads, well, basically, so when you come up to an intersection, there isn't a branch in your way. And you can have a clear view of the traffic, so that's what we're working on now. And the only other thing was a resident asked Ryan and I to stay at the store if there was going to be tree trimming this year. And I said, I'm not sure if we have any trees identified or if we don't have any trees identified. I don't know, but I just told my mentor at the meeting and we'll go for that, so.
Can I follow up on some?
Yes.
So today I was driving Moscow on the cutoff road and I saw this tractor, this farm road tractor. And he had like this arm and a brush hog at the end of the arm. That's how he was doing the bank. I don't know if you've ever seen that, but.
Oh, yeah, but that is, it like, if you wanna tear the trees. If you wanna tear the trees up and just don't care how they look, that's fine.
Like if you wanna like level it.
If you wanna trim these trees.
Well, this was the...
Right. Like a bank, a lot of banks.
Yeah, but they've done the whole grid up here all the way up.
County does that, looks like. Oh, man, they got the chain, whipping chain and it, it just busts limbs off, it looks like.
You mean outside, inside?
Yeah, they got, got on a tractor on an arm and they just wipe the tree out and it, it's terrible.
Okay. I thought, I thought the county does it all the time and it takes a couple of years for it to kinda...
The only thing I, I did mention to Dick and I will mention to the city council is the person who sprays the trail for the county, he's a private contractor, I have his name and number. And he said that he has a chemical, it's not a chemical, it's an enzyme, that he can spray on blackberry bushes that will wipe them out. They're just done. It's non-toxic, non-chemical, uh, it makes it something chemosynthesize. So I was...
You don't like that?
No.
I want his number.
Maybe on your property, but on a trail, people go down and pick them up all the time.
Yeah, no, I want his number for my property because I'm tired of them wrapping themselves around like cameras.
There's a lot of places in town where it could be used or whatever, but I'm just saying that it is possible. We don't, I know people pick on the trail, but I'm gonna have to either spray them with spray to knock them back because they're, because of the babies.